Good morning, good morning. Prosperity here. How is everyone as you're coming in? Let's see how we're gonna do today on the councils. With Brandon Johnson, who will be live today. And we'll get to see the exact reactions coming straight from the mayor's office. In his council meeting today. Can you hear me good? If you can, please put a one in the chat. Thank you. Hey Mayor, how you doing today? Good to see you. GTSY. Yeah, let's see what kind of clown show or circus we're gonna get today. Now, I want you all to pay attention to also what I was talking about when this pledge of allegiance, as well as to the minister that will be praying today. We'll see, cuz we don't know who it is. We find out when it happens. Yes, yes, and absolute yes, Mayor. Yes. Waiting. Not fast enough. But according to the press conference yesterday, he claims he has no opponents. When it was brought up as one of the questions from a reporter. I'm yet to get around to getting all that updated too. But I wanted to get the significant information updated as to what he's doing to the South and the West Side in the black communities that we had picked up from. That a lot of these owners are seniors who those homes had gone down through their families. And the taxes is what will get them. Those homes, a lot of them are paying off.
The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum is now open. Please use your e-device. The quorum is now open. If you need help logging in or have questions, please raise your hand.
So today, we get to see the digital board of all who's on board or in the, uh, in the chambers or online.
I will now take a voice vote for those who have not used their e-device. Alderman Lasbada. Not present. Alderman Robinson. Not present. Alderman Hall. Hall is present. Alderman Mitchell. Not present. Alderman Beal. Beal is present. Alderman Chico. Chico is not present in chambers. Alderwoman Ramirez. Ramirez is present. Alderman Lasbada is present in chambers. Alderwoman Gutierrez. Not present in chambers. Alderman David Moore. Not present in chambers. Alderman Curtis. Not present in chambers. Alderman O'Tree. Not present in chambers. Alderman, Alderwoman Taylor. Not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley. Not present in chambers. Alderwoman Tabarez. Not present in chambers. Alderwoman Scott. Scott is present. Alderperson Fuentes. Fuentes is present.
As you may not see, it's Angela Clay. Martin.
Cruz is present.
Matthew Martin.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Lynn Manna. Hoppenworth.
Alderman Quesada. Not present in chambers.
Deborah Silverstein.
Alderwoman Mitts. Not present in chambers. Alderman Knudsen. Uh, Kessin is present. Alderwoman Haddon. Not present in chambers. Have a quorum.
Very well, we have thirty-six, thirty-six members present. We do have a quorum. There are... There are nine members that wish to participate in today's meeting. Remotely, for reasons stated in Rule 59. Madam Clerk, can you verify the following alders to be present online? Mitts, Tabarez, Quesada, Taylor, Mosley, Chico, Moore. Gutierrez. Eight members.
Alderman Chico.
I have present clerk.
Chico is present. Alderman Moore.
The man sitting down with the glasses. He's more likely the preacher.
Alderwoman Taylor.
Here.
Taylor's present. Alderman Mosley.
Present.
Mosley is present. Alderwoman Tabarez.
Alderman Tabarez is present.
He's sitting next to the man with the red tie.
Alderman Quesada.
He's more likely gonna be the one who preach.
Present.
Okay. Present and Alderwoman Mitts.
Mitts is present.
And Alderwoman Gutierrez.
Miss is the VP. Oh, what's your favorite lieutenant mayor?
And Alderman O'Shea is now present in chambers. Alderman David Moore is now present in chambers. Any others that I missed? Any others online? Okay, your mayor.
A motion to approve the participation of the following members to participate online. It's been moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please, um, add those who have been verbally confirmed online to be able to participate in today's meeting remotely. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Which he does not have an allegiance to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for our invocation, which will be delivered by Donovan Price of Solutions and Resources.
Let us pray. Oh God, our God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. The God of Ida B. Wells, Harold Washington, and every praying grandmother on every block of this city. We call on you right now. Father, we stand in this chambers not just as officials, but as your servants. Not just as council, but as a people who know we need you. Because if you don't guide us, nothing we build will stand. Somebody ought to say amen. Lord, you have kept Chicago through the fire and through the flood. Through pandemics and protests, through violence and victories, through storms in the sky and storms in our soul. So we pause to say thank you for being a keeper, a protector, a way maker, a mind regulator. And God, we lift this city up. From Rogers Park to Roseland, from Austin to the East Side, from the lake to the last alley where somebody is praying for another chance. Let your healing roll down like waters and your justice like a mighty stream. Father, we lift up this nation wrestling with division, fear, and confusion. But you are still the God who can speak peace be still. So speak peace over America. Speak peace and unity over Illinois. Speak power, purpose, and protection over Chicago. We pray for the hungry, those choosing between groceries and rent. Let compassion rise up in this city like bread in the oven. Let no child go to bed hungry on our watch. We pray for the immigrant, the asylum seeker, the refugee, those who've been pushed by fear, by violence, by famine, by ice, detentions, and uncertainty. Let us that you told us to love the strangers. For many of us were once strangers too. We lift up those who are touched by the plague of gun violence. Every grieving mama, every broken father, every sibling lighting candles on cold sidewalks. God, wrap your arms around the victims and the families who survived them. Bless the outreach workers, the first responders, crisis teams, pastors, nurses, violence interrupters, trauma surgeons, and those who run toward the hurt when others run away. Lord, as we approach the holiday season, let the spirit of gratitude fall on this city like fresh snow. Let healing come to families who haven't spoken. And as 2026 approaches, God, we ask for a new year like no other. A year of rebuilding and restoration, revival in our homes, our blocks, and our schools. Now, Father, stretch your hands over all these alderpersons, this mayor. Infuse their minds with wisdom, their hearts with compassion, their decisions with righteousness. Let every vote be seasoned with justice, every debate soaked with respect. Let every choice reflect the people, not the pressure. And let the Chicago rise because they choose to rise. God, do a new thing in Chicago. And when history looks back on this day, on this meeting, on this council, let it be said that your spirit moved, your power showed up, and your people answered the call. We seal this prayer in the name of the one who still makes miracles. Let the whole city say amen. Let the whole chamber shout hallelujah. And let everybody believe in God and in the future shout amen again.
Amen.
And that's the next thing, the photo ops. Oh, you can't miss that part. I want you all to see this. Don't miss the photo ops. Gotta get that in.
Public comments?
Lie. Unlawful. All right, George. Okay, let me try this, cuz it's showing that it's on my screen.
They weighed across the Rio Grande. They're illegal. They are illegal. The mere fact that they did not go through immigration.
Can you all hear me okay? Thank you, Doreen.
Doesn't entitle them to arrive here. We have a process here.
Thank you.
And when they don't go by the process.
Inform me, cuz I'm keeping a watch. Thank you, cuz I can see it on my screen.
Welcome ICE. Anyway, look at your minutes. This whole body is a democratic machine here. A one-party system. Now, I've used the French Revolution as an example. The people are not here. Where are the people today? They're not here. They're not here for whatever reason. But Marie Antoinette say feed them cake. A revolution. A revolution means the purge, the cleanse, to get rid of all of them. The black ones, the white ones, the Hispanic, the Chinese, all of them. A revolution. Mr. Blakemore, you talking about violence. America was built on violence. The American Revolution with the mother country of England. The French Revolution, the Civil War, the World War I, World War II. These, leading to all these wars. These people are violent. Are violent. And I don't think that you can vote them out. I don't think you gonna be successful in voting them out. So, Mr. Blakemore, you, uh, uh, you getting real serious now. What are you talking about? A revolution. Malcolm X say, "By any means necessary." It might sound violent, but this country was built on violence. Enslaving black people in America. Enslaving us white wealth. Black labor. We got black faces in high places selling black people out. He played the race car. I'm playing it too. I'm playing it too. So...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Dennis White.
All right, Dennis. Bring it.
Well, that was a wonderful prayer itself, or we didn't get taxed for the prayer, first of all. Second of all, if you say that ICE is doing all those terrorist things, then the illegal immigrants need to go back south of the border and then reapply for asylum. Do it the right way, because we are flooded. The fi- resources, finance, everything. But when Lake and Riley got killed, I didn't hear no Hispanic citizen say nothing about her death. When that other girl who got killed and raped at the age of twelve in Houston, I didn't hear nobody say nothing. But when ICE come and started snatching illegals out.
Yes, Doreen.
Now, it come to hell raising. It come to uproar. Then you want the blacks to help fi- be your guard dog. No, 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 that's not gonna happen here, not in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. ICE gonna be here as long as Donald Trump is in the White House. That's one thing. Number two, twenty-five to ten, your budget just got shot down. So what's the next plan? You already trying to hit everybody else with these property tax that, that the last time you trying to hit us with a three hundred million dollar property tax.
That's correct.
That didn't work out very well for you.
That is correct.
You see there, you just like a Zomar Madami imitation.
Wow.
That's what you are, Brandon Johnson. You wanna play this socialist game? You not trying to help the blacks to, you know, get on their feet and stuff, and then you lie. You have the media protecting you. You have everybody to shield your shame. Itself for God. And the problem is, you don't know how to manage the city.
Right.
Just like your twin brother that didn't know how to manage the city, she got voted out. You gonna be voted out. The only thing that's gonna happen is you waiting to collect that five million dollar budget. If you want to tax the rich, tax yourself.
Whoa.
That's the first thing you should do. And then you over here want to hurt business and stuff. If you go, you haven't walked down State Street not one time and see how terrible it is. It used to be flourish, business, everything. You could have a parade.
It sure was.
But now, it look like a ghost town.
Sure does.
Michigan, the magnificent mile, it's gonna be next because of your bad policy. So if the Latinos or what this young man say about ICE, it should be you and your bad policy about the sanctuary law. And I think that need to be uplifting, plus you being impeached.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Reverend Dr. Wallace Gator Bradley.
I wanna say, uh... To God be the glory.
Hey Patricia.
Mayor Johnson, I wanna say this. Freedom of speech has a occupational hazard. Especially in this country. Everybody got a right to say what they wanna say. I'm of the opinion and belief that God has found favor in you and in Chicago. And I say continue to walk by faith.
See, they calling faith leaders.
You may need a certain amount of numbers to pass your budget, but know that there's only one number that matters. Two or three in his name.
Paid.
Don't stop. We whip you regardless of the color of their hats.
We're not with you.
It's gonna dawn on them that this budget is really a people's budget when it come down to it, cuz it gonna be the people within this chamber that's gonna aid and assist you to pass the people's budget.
And we voted those people in and voted them out.
I don't wanna waste my time for saying, stay true to God, cuz he found favor in you and in Chicago.
This man is lying.
To God be the glory, that's Gator's story.
Oh, he gonna have to answer to God for that statement.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Norma Rios Sierra.
Wow. This is why I told y'all, what happens down there with these pastors, ministers, rabbis, and so forth.
Good morning. My name, my name is Norma Rios Sierra. I serve on the Chicago Board of Education. I've had the pleasure of hearing a few of you at our board meetings. Uh, most recently at our August twenty-eighth budget board meeting.
Dennis brings it.
I just came to remind you guys of some big promises that
He's a veteran too.
the majority of you made. There was a letter that was signed by many of you. Let me pull it up. We had Alderman Dowell, Alder Robinson, Alder Yancey, Alder Harris, Alder Chico, Alder Lee, Alder Ramirez, Gutierrez, Lopez, Coleman, Curtis, O'Shea, Taylor, Mosley, Rodriguez, Tabarez, Cincho Lopez, Alder Cruz, Alder Cardona, Alder Villegas, Alder Spazaro, Alder Nuge, and Alder Vasquez, Alder Lawson, Alder Martin, Alder Haddon, and Alder Silverstein. You signed a letter that was very generous and very passionately supported Chicago Public Schools. I'm gonna quote a few few short quotes from this letter, just so you know the impact that this letter made. "We were not able to pass within our budget alternates to be able to save us in case this body did not surplus the TIF that we were expecting." We weren't able to do that because this body signed this letter that said they were demanding that the Chicago Board of Education avoid cutting one hundred and seventy-five million from schools to pay for the MEABF payment, pension payment. You all were demanding that we not make that payment. You all said, "We will support a TIF surplus to help balance both the city and CPS budget." "We recommend you approve the budget presented by CPS." "We demand sensible leadership and stability for our children and workers of Chicago Public Schools." You all demanded that we pass a budget that heavily relied on a historic TIF surplus. You all made some big promises to our Chicago Public Schools. If we do not get that TIF surplus, we're gonna be sending a lot of pink slips for Christmas. And we're gonna put it right back on you. It is on you. Put your money where your mouth is. You promised our children a balanced budget this year. We need that. Our children need that. Every school in your district will be impacted. It will be on you. CTU created a calculator that tells us, that breaks down the heavy impact that your schools will see. Alderman Irving, in your ward, Allen Locke Charter School would lose six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. That would be ten positions cut immediately. Our children would come back from Christmas break and their teachers would not be in school. Alder Wagis back.
Thank you very much for your comments, however your time has expired.
Precisely, off the mic.
Our next speaker is Jessica Jackson.
Okay. Light it up. That's how you run. See how you running? You see, that's how you run. Anyway, so in response to ICE. ICE is here. ICE is supposed to be here. President Trump is doing what the majority of the country asked him to do and what they voted for. Correct. Mass deportation. It doesn't matter that a bunch of illegals don't want it. What matters is that the taxpayers and the legitimate citizens do want it. So if you feel some type of way about it, you take that energy and you go to your country with it. The people here have paid taxes and have got their citizenship to vote for what it is that they want. The fact, the fact that you don't agree with it is neither here nor there. Now, the real issue that I'm here about today, outside of the fact that, of course, you didn't show up to help, you know, with my situation, and I didn't expect you to. But black people needed to see what you own. Uh huh. And that's, that was the purpose of that. But what I am learning in this whole process is that because we have voted for Trump and because we're talking about Chicago flipping red, that we're getting retaliated against. We're getting retaliated against in the courts. We're getting retaliated against in public places, like what Zoe talked about, what happened at the Trump Tower the other night. Let me be clear. And again, I don't know if you are Haitian or not. That's just allegedly. But let me tell you something about black Americans. We understand our right to vote, and we can vote for anybody we want to. Be it Democratic, be it Republican, be it independent, be it the Green Party, the Liberation Party. We vote however we wanna vote. So says the water holes and the dog bites that my mother and father took in Jim Crow Mississippi. Do you understand that? Do you understand that? I'm sixty-three years old, and I've been voting since I was eighteen years old. I vote the way I wanna vote. And so does everybody else in the United States of America. That's what peaceful protest looks like. Not a bunch of weirdos attacking ICE cars and ICE agents having to get tear gas because they're attacking the police. Police attacked us. That's how we got the... Police attacked us. That's how we got the right to vote. You gonna respect that. And everybody else in this room, we don't have to vote for y'all while y'all sitting around dogging us out, not giving us our money. My property taxes are increasing, but it's nonsense for Mexicans and immigrants. While at the same time, Mexico is asking for Trump to intervene in Mexico cuz they want the Americans out of Mexico. They don't want Guatemalans and all that in their country, and he gonna come over here with this nonsense at this mic? I'm telling you, you don't never bother my.
They sure are.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Out in Mexico.
Your honor, there are no further speakers.
Very well, this concludes the comment period. Chair recognizes Alder Helu.
Mexico is protesting.
Thank you, mayor. Just wanted to be recorded.
Clerk, could you please add Alder Gutierrez? Could you add her to the quorum roll call? Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, can I be recognized as president?
We can do that. Mr. Clerk, please add Alderman Mitchell to the quorum roll call. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Also would like to be added to the roll call.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, could you please add Alderman Derek Curtis to the quorum roll call? Are there any other Alders that we missed that wish to be added to the quorum? Very well, the next up is resolutions. We don't have any. Communications, Mr. Clerk, do we have any?
A communication from his honor, the mayor, to the honorable city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transfer it with an ordinance amend the enterprise zone two. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours. Signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, referred to Committee on Finance.
Hit the like button, please, please.
Ana Valencia, City Clerk hereby informs the City Council that the following document was filed in her office. The Executive Order twenty twenty-five dash nine, Coordination of Outreach, Logistical Support, and Relief Efforts Related to Snap Benefit Disruptions and Economic Destabilization Related to Immigration Enforcement. City Clerk Valencia also transmits the following miscellaneous communications requiring City Council action. Claims against the city of Chicago, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning Reclassification of Areas Shown on Map Number Seventeen Dash G at sixty-nine twenty-five through sixty-nine thirty-nine North Sheridan Road and eleven fifty-one through eleven sixty-three West Morris Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Your honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Honorable Mayor Johnson and other city officers.
Very well, committee reports, we have one, the chair recognizes.
Please.
Finance Chair Dowell. Just a second. The chair recognizes Alderman, just pardon me, Rodriguez Sanchez.
Mr. President, can I be added to the roll?
Mr. Clerk, very well, could you add Aldo Rodriguez Sanchez to the quorum roll call? Pardon me, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Dowell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President and members of the City Council, the City Council's Committee on Finance held a meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five to consider an ordinance amending titles one, three, four, seven, nine, ten, eleven, fourteen A, fourteen B, and fourteen X of the municipal code and other amendments which relate to revenue derived from certain taxes, fines, and fees, also known as the twenty twenty-six Revenue Ordinance. This item received a do not pass recommendation in committee. Chairman Irvin and I defer and publish this item.
Very well, Chairman Irvin, can you confirm? Very well, this item will be deferred in public. Thank you. Next up, the agreed upon calendar. So Alderman Harris, we don't have any. Very well. For a new business, do we have any, Mr. Clerk? The clerk will begin with the fiftieth.
Yes. First guy, I'll take care of the green.
Well, we don't, we don't, uh, we don't have any, so we're good. Thank you, though, for new new business, the clerk.
Zoning amendments which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals on traffic signs, which are referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, and exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way.
Been protesting that.
All the person Taylor has proposed ordinance for amendment of annual appropriation ordinance, the transfer funds within the Committee on Education, contractual services to personnel services.
You know what?
Which is referred to Committee on Budget and Government Operations.
They should have been doing that prior.
Also has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance, the transfer funds within the Committee on Education, contingencies to personnel services, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. All the person Ramirez has proposed ordinance for support of a Class Six B tax incentive for the property at twenty-two thirty-four West Forty-third Street, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. And all the person Hall has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, sections, section four dash four dash three thirty-one that prohibits sale of cannabinoid hemp products in Grand Crossing Chatham Residential Area, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Your honor, that concludes the presentation of all the magic introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There is no journal to be approved. Now for unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Conway and I defer to him.
Very well, the chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
He's running for mayor.
Was, was DNP'd last week. You might have seen that I was pretty fired up when it was. In fact, I think Alders Quinn and O'Shea came up to me and said, you know, we were really sure you were Irish until we saw how you responded to that. And I will tell you why I was, why I was a bit upset is because this is a pretty, uh, a pretty important project. We have four hundred thousand square feet of vacant space at one oh five West Adams, um, that will be reused here to, to create four hundred residential units.
That's right outside.
Three hundred union construction jobs. So also we have a, it is a minority owned developer, Primera Group, whose principal and owner is Gabriel Martinez, a son of Little Village. Uh, and the, and the developers committed to, to going above and beyond the MBE requirements of forty-four percent MBE as well as WBE and veteran owned housing. So our veteran owned development, rather, hiring. So, um, based on the importance of this project to the redevelopment efforts of the city of Chicago, I would.
In this chat.
Kindly yet firmly ask you to pass.
Thank you.
Very well, do you wish to make a motion, Alderman Conway?
And, and, and I'm happy to have that done by voice vote.
Very well, what's your motion?
And a motion to pass.
Very well, there's a motion on the floor by Alderman Conway on item zero two, zero two, five, zero, zero, two, zero, four, six, three, regarding the historical landmark designation for the Bankers Building at one oh five West Adams. Um, a voice vote is what's been requested. All those in favor of the passage of this item signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay, the motion passes. Alderman Mitchell, a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I'm moved to reconsider the vote.
All those, the reconsideration of this motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, anything else for unfinished business?
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any more unfinished.
Very well, for miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of, of any miscellaneous business.
And for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell. Okay, the chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to offer, well, first I would like to, um, suspend the rules for a temporary consideration of a resolution.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for the suspension of the rules to take up a, a consideration or a resolution.
Mr. President, uh.
Hold, hold, hold on a second. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Yes, uh, what resolution are we considering to suspend the rules? Uh-uh, uh-uh, need to know what we considering to suspend the rules before we, why? Then pass it out before.
Stay here. So Alderman Irvin is asking Alderman Beal before we, uh, before for the suspension of the rules, this body is asking what the resolution is. Okay, so Alderman Beal is prepared to pass that resolution out. Could we help?
Resolution didn't pass right. Mr. Mr. President, it is a simple.
Oh, just a second, the rules have not been suspended yet. Let's give a second so that the resolution can be considered, and then I'm happy to defer back to you. Please, uh, please continue.
Alderman Irvin.
You can pass it out.
Ward has been hit one of the hardest with the black constituents in his ward that pays property taxes that were increased almost over one hundred percent. And many of those homes have been paid for, passed down generational, where they can lose their homes. And Johnson's response to that, talk to your alderman. One hundred thirty percent during correct. Some a little less, but still that's the height, yes. His ward is on the west side of Chicago. People with low incomes to possibly no incomes that are coming in from a job but from social security only. I know some that are in his ward. They trying to block Bill. Bill is on the south side of Chicago and he stands against Johnson.
Does everyone have a copy of the resolution? Very well, does this body need time to read the resolution?
Yes, it is a land grab. They've been wanting those properties for ages. Cuz they're close to downtown. You can see the skyline of downtown from those locations. I can see it from mine, but not as well as they can see it from theirs. I hear Jessica in the background. They know what's going on. Cuz Bill is opposition to Brandon Johnson. The man that you see standing in that.
Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, with the resolution that has been given, uh, this is an item that normally goes to our committee on committees and rules. That's true. Um, this is an item that normally would go to our committees on committees and rules.
Get it up there.
And, uh, with that, I object to this, uh, the suspension of the rules and ask for a roll call vote.
Very well, there's a motion on the floor
Always trying to hold something in the com.
To be able to take up this resolution, there's a motion for a roll call vote.
Can I explain the resolution, Mr. President?
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a very simple resolution that only requires, um, twenty-six votes to suspend the rules. But I think we can all agree, I think, I think I got the floor.
Take it, Bill.
I think we can all agree that Mr. Bennett Lawson has done a yeoman's job as acting chair of the zoning committee. And I think we all have a great level of respect for the job that he has done. And I think it behooves us to move forward and remove the acting chair from Mr. Lawson, who has probably been chair this term longer than anybody else that has been in that position this term. The business community respects him. We respect him. And I think it just behooves us to go ahead and move forward and putting him in as permanent chair of the zoning committee. I think we owe that to him because of the job that he has done, so we can move forward in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, you're welcome. You're welcome. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, members of the committee. I just wish to speak to the motion on, on taking this up as a point of business today.
The motion for suspending the rules?
Correct.
Okay.
We have within our ability the power to suspend the rules, but also to take this up in an immediate nature because this is a matter of internal concern. This is not affect city policy. This is a, a resolution for this chamber, which allows us to introduce it today, to act today, and to get it done today. And I think that's what the, to my co, my other colleague who said that normally we would have this go to rules. Yes, we'd have a lot of things go to rules in a timely fashion, but to the point that our colleague just made, this has been going on for months and months and months on end. And both for your administration and for the workings of this body, we need a permanent chair, and I would ask all of my colleagues to know that you have the full weight and authority to suspend now, act now, and move on now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Harris also wishes to be added to the quorum roll call. Uh, Mr. and Madam Clerk, could you please confirm Alderwoman Harris's participation online?
Alderman Harris is here.
Alderwoman Harris is online.
Very well, please add Alderwoman Harris to the quorum roll call. There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. It's been a roll call vote that requires thirty-four votes to suspend the rules. Mr. Clerk, could you please make the e-vote, Madam Clerk, the application available at this time? Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Mr. Mr. President, I have to stand up here and appreciate the, uh, the body taking the, uh, opportunity to go ahead and, and, um, try to resolve an issue with the vacancy that's been taking place. Um, but there's been a lot of discussion with a lot of the members around historically how that position, uh, has been represented. I can tell you that in the past, we've always had representation at the level with budget, finance, as well as zoning. And at this time right here, there's not enough diversity within, within the, those important chairmanships. And so, Mr. President, in, I'd like to make a motion to strike and insert, uh, Alderman Viejas as the zoning chairman, uh, so that way we can move forward. And I, and I ask for a roll call vote on that.
Wow, a motion over the motion to, to counteract another motion.
Resolution to put someone else's name in.
He's supposed to be legal counsel, the one talking to Brandon.
Just a second, you all.
That's his legal sitting right next.
In order for us to consider this resolution at all, to add or strike names, we have to suspend the rules first. If the rules are suspended, then we're happy to refer back to the motion that Alderman Viejas has made. Mr. Clerk, please proceed. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
And this is just how convoluted these meetings become. Is one that's fighting against another with different motions to have this one strike and moving forward with this and cancel that.
Voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your devices. If you need assistance, please raise your hand. Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of the resolution.
For those that may not be able to see this part, Deborah Silverstein did a yes. Martin, Matthew Martin, who's also a civil rights lawyer, did no. Lenny Manah Happenworth, no. Maria Haddon is not on the council today. She's not logged in, so therefore there will be no vote from Maria Haddon. Alderman, who's on the north side.
I will now, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alder, Alderson Robinson. Alder Person Robinson is a no. Alder Person Yancy. Alderman Yancy is a yes. Alderwoman Harris.
Alderwoman Harris is a no.
Alderwoman Harris is a no. Alderman Chico.
Ex-cop. Alderman Chico.
Alderman Chico. Alderwoman Gutierrez.
No.
Alderwoman Gutierrez is a no. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is a no. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes, thank you. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderwoman Taylor is a no. Alderman Mosley.
No.
Alderman Mosley is a no. Alderwoman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderwoman Tabarez is a yes. Alder, Alder Person Fuentes. Alder Person Fuentes is a no.
Most of those who voted yes are for American citizens.
No.
Alderman Casada is a no. Alderwoman Mitz.
Come on, Mitz.
Alderwoman Mitz.
She steps away. That's what she does.
Alderman Lawson.
Emma Mitz steps away when it comes to any kind of.
Alderman Lawson is a no.
Alderman Mitz is a no.
Alderwoman Mitz is a no.
Okay, there it is.
Alderman Chico? Yeah. And Alderman Burnett?
Angela Clay.
Alderman Burnett is a no.
Angela Clay, no.
Alderman Chico, one more time. Voting is now closed.
There are eighteen yays, thirty nays. The motion to suspend the rules has failed. For the date and time of the next meeting, the chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
President, except for the ordinance set in the dating.
Please hit the like button.
To the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Richard.
You're ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section One. The next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten o'clock AM in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago. beginning at ten o'clock AM in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell.
In the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, sole order for the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by voice vote.
Very well, all those in favor of passing the omnibus signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. The omnibus is passed. Alderman Mitchell, on the motion to reconsider.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of the vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion fails. Very well. For adjournment, Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, there being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, sole order, the meeting is adjourned.
This is one of the quickest council meetings that they have had in a long time. So thank you all for joining. Please hit the like button on your way out so that it can send it out through the algorithms. We want others to be able to see what is occurring down at Chicago City Hall meetings. Thanks for joining us and have a blessed day.